Okay.
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 Nobody.
I'm gonna have to walk back and watch these worms appear.
Grant Forks County Commission Meeting will begin. Please note for the record that all commissioners are present, welcome. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes.
So move.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? If there is no discussion, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carry. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the order of the agenda. We do have one item, uh, number nine, our HR director is not present. So if someone wants to make a motion to remove that from the agenda, please.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. The fourth item on the agenda is the approval of consent agenda. We have bills, status changes, overtime, May financial report, and out of state travel. Does anybody wish to have anything called?
Mr. Gerald make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All right, any discussion? If there is no discussion, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. The next item on the agenda is, uh, Mr. Dave Hankleben, uh, Reliance Telephone. Is that you, sir?
Yes, it is.
Okay, please introduce yourself for us.
Man, uh, Dave Hason from Reliance Cell phone in Grant Forks, North Dakota here. Is, uh, I'm man of chair and commission members. I first want to say thank you. First off, thank you for the thirty-two years you've been doing business with us. We wouldn't have gotten started without you. You were the first customer we had thirty-two years ago. And, and thank you for that. Uh, I also want to thank you for your time today to, to hearing me. And, uh, it giving me an opportunity to share with you, uh, what we see i- as the right answer for the decision for the inmate phones. So what I did was inside backup, uh, hopefully you had a chance to see the appeal that I sent to you guys. Did you guys see, okay. Is, is that, uh, so what I did was is after, uh, listening to the, uh, YouTube, is, is that I took a list of, of the important items, uh, that, that the committee, that the jail committee put together. And I addressed those items. And this is a copy of my address to those items. So what I did is I did a backup and I took a look at it and it's like kind of starting fresh. Is that, you know, what's, what's most important to Grant Forks County is, is, uh, to the Grant Forks County Jail. And, and they stated the objectives is, is that, uh, is, is that first off, they, they wanted to improve their technology. And they wanted to know what technology was being offered. And then the other thing is cost to prison family, all important items, scope of services provided, cost to the inmates, the method of, a method to capture the old money to the county by the inmates. And then the commission to Grant Forks County. So what I did is I laid out each one of those in, in each one of these pages here. Is the first one, the technology offered, is, is that currently, uh, we've developed, uh, since two thousand sixteen, we've been doing texting in the jail. Okay, it's, uh, texting has become more important than the phone calls. It's actually in Grant Forks County, you will do anywhere from eight hundred to six hundred dollars a day texting. Your phones are around six hundred. So you can see how important texting is. So what we did is we developed this. We give every inmate one of these devices. This is, this is an Apple device. Our guys have rewritten it. So to the inmate, it looks like an Apple phone. This is, but they don't know the difference. But we totally stripped all the information that was on the Apple iPod. And we made it look like an Apple phone to the inmate. So the inmate picks this up. He has his own phone number, his name's on his device, it's assigned to him. And, and he can text anybody in the country, and anybody in the country can text him, just like your phone. Or just like your phone. Okay, so, so the thing is, that, that's really important then is, is that they can quickly text, it's instantaneous texting. And they can text anybody. So in the Grant Forks Jail, once we put this in, we doubled the revenue. And, and, and we've done it, we go, we done, we cover like a hundred and sixty-five jails. Every jail that we put this in, we doubled the revenue, okay? But in some jails, we four times it. In one jail in Albert Lee, Minnesota, we twelve times it. Is, is, we twelve X it, the revenue that they're getting. This is a very important device. Ninety-two percent of the phone calls coming out of that jail come out of this device. So if you take a hundred percent of the texting, which is like eight hundred to six hundred dollars, and then the six hundred dollars of phone calls is all coming off of this device. Okay, this is patented technology. I've written six patents around this device. Part of it's in the case that's home, you can drive a, a car over it, you can drive a truck over it. You can throw it on the concrete floor, a hundred and twenty times, I, I did that myself, and you won't break this device. You won't break, you know, they won't break the case, okay? So every inmate gets one, every inmate has his own phone number. So, uh, what we, what we do is, is that the technology is, is that nobody else has got it. And we license it to other people across the country. So we have people from Washington State to Florida that are using this device. And I know, I know it's kind of hard for you guys to think about it, but a little old company in Grant Forks, North Dakota, has the best technology that's out there. And I guarantee that to you. This is that nobody can compete with us. Nobody. Is, I'm dead serious about that. So anyways, is, is that, uh, we do, right now, we're doing about eight hundred thousand texts a day. This is that, with, with this, with these devices. So anyways, this is that, uh, another important item that we have is investigative tools. Is, is, I've had, uh, the FBI out of, the FBI out of Chicago has told us they wish every jail had this device. Okay, the reason why is because they can search and sort. We have tools that they can search and sort. Is, is that they can search and sort by, by a word, by phrases. And the other thing about it is, is that because the inmates can so freely text, is that they forget that they're texting an inmate in jail. And they're sharing information, and investigators are just nailing these people. And, and, you know, bringing more people to court and prosecuting more people with this device. Very important tool. Is, is the other thing that we do is, is we look, Reliance looks at it a little bit differently. Is, is that we, we provide a media platform on here, okay? We, our media platform focuses on reduced recidivism. We want to help the inmates. We want to help so they don't come back. Especially me, I live here. I, I want to help these inmates so they get better, that they don't come back. Some, it won't, it won't do any good. But there are some that, that it will do good. And, and all the information out there says, the better you can communicate with your family, the better the inmate will do when he gets to the outside. Also, we put self-help programs on, I'll show you a little bit later, that help the inmate get better. Is, is like situations with this device with the texting, which is, which has turned out to be really good, is, is that the inmates have told me that they're teenagers especially, they can communicate with them. Teenagers hardly answer a phone. And most of the time in the situation for a jail, the inmate, he, he's in jail, but their, the family is doing their business. They're going to school, they're working. Texting is a big deal to them. Is, is that, it's become the most important thing to them. Is, is that, uh, the other thing is, is about the equipment that we provide. If you look at the last page of the, uh, I, I threw in a picture at the last page. Is, is that our equipment is on the, see this picture here? This is our wall mounted. You actually don't even need the wall mounted, because we can do everything on this. But it is, is Brett has asked for the wall mounted, that's our wall mounted. This is HomeWave's wall mounted. I've seen this device. This device, if you get pushed into it, you're gonna split, split that person's head open. Is, or his elbow, or whatever you push him into it. Those edges are sharp. It's number fourteen gauge steel, sharp edges. Is, is that, that should not be put in your jail. This is that, that, that should be redesigned. If you look at ours, we specifically designed it, we patented it. Is, is that it's adjustable to the height of the inmate. Also, if somebody gets shoved into it, it's all curved edges. You know, they're not gonna break skin. You know, that's a very important issue in a jail. Is, is that, that's why I printed that out. So that's really something to think about, uh, going forward. This is, okay, so the second page, cost to the prison family. So, so in, in Brett's statement, he said that, you know, that HomeWave was the least expensive. Well, it's true in some cases, but it's not true in all cases. Actually, in fifty-two percent of the cases, the phone calls that go out of this jail are cheaper with Reliance Cell phone. It's eighteen cents a minute. Okay, I, I put the numbers down here, but if you take a look at this, is, is that Reliance, we built in the FUSF, the Federal Uniform Service Fund, okay? It's a strange deal, but the feds are charged at thirty-one point eight percent on every one of these inmates' calls. You know, this is that, it, it's ridiculous. That's a lot of money, but they do that. And what they do is they use that money to give out free phones to other people. But, but just, if you take a look at this, when we, when we bill twenty-five cents, eighteen cents is what Reliance Cell phone makes out of it. Is the other seven cents goes to the federal government. Now, if you, if you look down below, excuse me, is, is that the HomeWave rates are twenty cents, which, which is a good rate. Is, is, but then they're gonna have to add, you know, six cents to it, so it's really twenty-six cents a minute. Is, is that, uh, because of the thirty-one point eight percent that they add on to pay the taxes, and you gotta pay the taxes. So, so anyway, so in that case, is, is that we're actually cheaper than they are. And, and that's not what was stated, but, and this is in fifty-two percent of the calls. Fifty-two percent of the calls leaving your jail are interstate calls. That's, that's a high number, actually. But the reason it's that high is because you're border, you're, you're border to Minnesota. A lot of the people are calling into Minnesota. And then plus you have a lot of inmates that are from out of, out of state. So your interstate hate, interstate rate is very high, uh, but, but it is what it is. And then that makes our calls, fifty-two percent of our calls are cheaper than what they would be with HomeWave. And, uh, so, this is, the, the next item is, is that it would be this sheet, the inmate wireless? Okay, this pretty much tells the story. Is, is that, um, so communication features, okay, there's no rental fee. So an inmate can make collect calls, he can make phone card calls, he can make visitation, he can do visitation. Our system also has free voicemail, so people don't have money to talk to inmate, they could still leave them a message, it's free, it's private. Is, is jail staff messaging informs, the inmate has access to everything to the right side of this table. And then for support messages, we let inmate contact us directly with texting and with phone calls. So when, when Brett mentioned that we were four dollars, well, the four dollars applies if the people are gonna use texting. Then they pay four dollars a month to rent it. Is, is, when, once they do that, they can make direct video calls, they can do texting, and they can do direct phone calls at twenty-five cents a minute. Is, is that, one thing that'll point out is, is that our, all of our stuff on this device is, is that if you want to do a video call, it's ten-digit. You compare that to HomeWave. At HomeWave, you have to set up an account, you have to, you have to log on. And then, then once you log on, then what we'll do, it will, it will notify the inmate out the jail, it'll put it up under their kiosk and say, John Doe, Jane Doe is wanting to have a, a met, well, message, but wanting to have a visitation with you. In our situ, in our situation, is, is ten-digit dial. The person has already downloaded our, our app. So like, our app is, is the first time inmate tries to call them, you know, with a video call, we'll send them a text message saying, download this app. They download the app, the next time the inmate tries to call them, ten-digit dial, they're connected. It's that easy. Whereas is, is in the HomeWave system, you've got to set up an account, you gotta, you gotta put a, make up an account. And you also have to put in photo ID. And, and there's a list of things that you have to do to get a video call from an inmate. And we record them all. This is, but if you want to get a message from an inmate, same procedure. You have to download their app, you have to sign up to an account. And then if you message the inmate, what it will do, it will send a message to the jail, the message, they will, they will relay it to the location in the jail for the inmate to see that he's got a message. Then that inmate can message back, you know, it can message back to that person. But you see how cumbersome that is? I mean, compare that to your phone. You text, the message goes. The message goes back. Anywhere in the US, that's the way this device works. Their system is, is it's cumbersome. It take, you have to sign up before you can get a message, and you have to sign up before you can get a video call. Is, is both those two items. Phone calls, I don't know. Some phone calls are something new, and they don't address it on their website. So I've researched their website, I've gone through the proposal, and I don't find much about their phone calls. So I, I don't exactly know how they work. But I know how the messaging works, it's very clear on their website, how it works. So, so in additional services here, you know, free of charge, uh, the federal government requires that the inmate gets pre-uh, information, prison rape elimination act. It requires that they do this. So what we do is we build it into here. So the first thing that the inmate sees is the video for the prison or elimination app. You know, it's free of charge, watch the video, and then we can also, the jail can tell us if they want us to acknowledge it. And then if they acknowledge it, you got a record, the inmate saw it, you did your job, and you, you, you accomplished that task. Well, the other thing is, is the jail handbook, we can do the same thing. We can make a requirement that they read the jail handbook before this starts to work, okay? Is, is sometimes that, that's the way you gotta do it with an inmate. Uh, but we can put, I'll just go down the list, we can put the state code on here, uh, law library. Law library is, we, we can write the interface and hook you up to a law library. It's actually your jail negotiates your best price with people that provide law library. And then we don't put any addition on it, we just provide the interface for free. And then, then you can be connected to a law library. Uh, but you just go down the list, we can put like, uh, attorney directories, we can put bonding directories. Basically, we basically take out all of the paperwork in a jail. I mean, that's a nice thing, is, is get rid of the paperwork. We can do it all on here. But the commissary ordering, job searches, inmate programs, uh, we got announcements. Is, is a new feature that we're coming out with, is we can do announcements. So if there's church at six o'clock, is, you can put out an announcement, everybody knows church is at six. So, uh, so move over to the right side. This is, this is my favorite, this is personal to me, is, is that we have the ability to do like Kindle, where we can do edocs, where we can, we, we can read the Bible to the inmate, and we can give it to them in, in audio as it goes through and highlights the words. So we can actually learn, learn, learn English by listening to the Bible study. You know, I mean, it, but we can put any document out there, any document that you have, we can put on there, any book, uh, anything you want, but we, we have a bunch of them. And now, this is just a short list, because we have one jail that has over a hundred of these items on there now, Grand Rapids, Minnesota. Uh, but there's others too that have a lot, lot more than this. But if you look at it, we're, we're trying to help this inmate, you know? Is anger management, you know, if, if the inmate can just gather something, you know, from, from reading some of these things, he just, it takes away something. You know, then, then we've done a good job. You know, I mean, we've, we've done something for this inmate. And if you just go down the list, is depression, code dependency, emotional control, family matters, positive attitudes. I mean, just go down the list. It's all things that, if just one of these items spurs something in this guy, then, then we've done something for this guy. So let's go, uh, scope of services, okay? Well, first off, Reliance has been in business thirty-two years. HomeWave Telephone Experience say that they've been in business for five years. Technology, first in class, nobody's got anything like this, not even close. Is, is, and we patented, we're doing eight hundred texts per day. They, they don't have texting capability. What they do have is messaging. Is they can do emails and they can message, which is a cumbersome system where you have to sign up for. We'll beat them eight to one on, on texting. We'll do, we'll do eight to every one message that they do, is, with the system that we have. We have, uh, we're a Grant Forks taxpayer, we got several properties, we got twenty-two employees here, multiple businesses. Uh, service location, Grant Forks, okay? We're, we're like five to seven minutes away from, from the jail. Is, is that, you know, we can respond. They're all in Kansas City. You know, there's a big difference in service there. And that was one thing I noticed that was missing out of the proposal, no questions about service. So anyways, so what we did, we made commission of fifty-eight dollars per inmate per month. Whether, whether you achieve that in revenue or not, all I have to do is get it from Brett. If you got two hundred inmates, you got two hundred and ten, whatever it is, we write a check for that amount every month. Is, is that, okay, so HomeWave, they, they've got commissions, and they got sixty-five for telephones, thirty-five for video visitation, thirty-five for messaging. I could tell you, is, is that their messaging will be, will drop down to about twenty percent. And the phones, I don't know. I, I don't know what they're gonna do for phones. But I know one thing, is, is that our, the inmate makes ninety-two percent of his phone calls off of this, and it's so easy. You know, he presses a button, dials a number, he's connected. You know, their system works differently. Is, is that, they use, you know, they, they say that they have a tablet. You know, this is what they use, is a big bulky tablet like this. What do you want to communicate with? Like a phone, or do you want to use a tablet? Okay, that's the difference. Is, is that, I understand why, why you would want this for games, video, music. You know, I understand that, you know, but, but for communications, information, this is your phone. This is what you want, and this is what's gonna get you the revenue in that jail. Remember, you guys like did eight hundred dollars a day, six to eight hundred dollars a day in texting on this device. Is, is, that will not happen with HomeWave. So, uh, let's just take a look here. The kiosk, I explained to you, what I see as a problem with their kiosk, is we built ours to be protective to the inmate, they got sharp metal edges. The tablet phone is, they don't have one, we have one. Is, is that it's easy to use, convenient, uh, and the inmates really like it. And then the next item on the same page is the cost to the inmate for services. Well, okay, so we found out that the cost is eighteen cents a minute, which is less than HomeWave. HomeWave's at twenty cents. That's, that's on the interstate. And on the local interstate, we're twenty-five, and they're twenty cents. And then on texting, is, is that, it's nine cents a text. And the messaging is, I think, is ten cents. I'm not sure why he has that, that fractional amount there. Also is, is that the emails are fifty cents. Is, is, that's what we got from their customer service center. The free, the free text messages for, for money requests, is, is when you have the inmate, this device, is, is that he becomes instant contact with his prison family. He doesn't have to pay anything. Is, is, which will work so well for the jail, because now the prison family know he's in jail. You know, otherwise you got people calling the jail, in this case, you don't have to. Is, is that, because he gets to send five free requests every day to his prison family to ask them to put money on his wallet account. Okay, so they know he's in jail. It says, you know, John Doe, is, is, you know, the Grant Forks County Jail requesting that you put money on his account. If we give a link and they can put money on the account, really easy. Is, is that, but now the family knows he's in jail, it takes the burden off the jail staff themselves. Also, the one thing that, that's not mentioned in here is, is our voice messaging. That takes, that takes the burden off the staff to answer calls, because they can leave voice messages for free. There's no charge, is they can leave voice messages for free with the inmates, like, you know, John, call me, you know, at eight o'clock tonight, okay? You could do that, they don't have to pay anything for that, it's free. And, and the other guys don't do that. So anyways, is, is that, uh, each one has their own personal phone number. Is, is, uh, and in HomeWave, you're gonna have to install an app to get this to work. You do not have to with this. And this, this, this tablet's got his name on it, he's got his own phone number, that's a big part of what our patent is. And, and in their case, they, they typically use shared tablets, but in this case, they've offered Brett a one-to-one. And I'm not sure if they're gonna sign them, or if they're gonna do them in a share mode. Is, is that, uh, they only have to pay four dollars if they're using the enhanced mode, using, doing the texting. And, and then the cost of the video calls is twenty-five cents a minute. Is, is that, so they're also twenty-five cents a minute, uh, or twenty cents a minute. But then they have like messages are fifty cents, video message are fifty cents, uh, video photos are twenty-five cents. And, and both of us have, cost of visitation is free. Now, in our situation, you do not, not have to go up to a wall unit. You can do your video visitation with this. It cuts down the need that inmates have to share, or argue, or fight about who's gonna use that device on the wall. Each has their own. And then we have a blur feature on here, so that when he's doing his video visitation in the lobby, he does not have to be standing on a wall, he can do it here. And then everything's blurred out behind his face. So the only thing that the, the, the members in the lobby seat is his face. They don't see the jail, they don't see the, the officer behind them, they don't see the other inmate. They only see the face of, of the inmate, okay? So, so you don't need all that equipment mounted on the wall. You know, this is that, this will take care of it all. Is, is that, uh, the other thing is, is that what we're, we're big on is free, free education materials, free self-help. What they want to do with this, and what they proposed to do in the Grant Forks Jail, is to do games, video, and music. Now, now I try to look at the perspective as me as a commissioner. And you go up to the people that live in this town, do you think these people that live in this town think they should have games, music, and video? I don't think so. I really don't. And I think they would prefer that somebody try to help these guys, provide them with the information that actually helps them, you know, get better. You know, they can stay entertained, they, they stay entertained because they, they keep this device, they, they quit fighting with each other, and they quit arguing. And in fact, this has become the best tool that the jail has ever had. Because what the deal is, the inmate starts acting up, starts misbehaving, you just give them a warning. I'm taking your phone away from you. I tell you what, they pay attention quickly. They do. Is, is that, this is the best tool they've ever had for discipline. Is they can take it away from the inmate at any time, and we make them sign a statement on here, saying is the jail has complete control over this device, and anytime it can be taken away, even if you got money on it, it doesn't matter. And they sign that statement before they get to use this, okay? So very powerful tool. Is, is that, um, the other thing that's on here, if, if you think about it, is for ease of use, the inmate has all his phone numbers on here. You know, he's been texting these people back and forth, he's been dialing back and forth, the history's on here. You know, so how does it make it any easier for the inmate to dial? On the other thing, he's gotta go log into something on the wall, or log into a, a device, and then, then get his information. I don't know that they have that information. You know, we do. We make it easy, it's very easy to use. So, okay, here's an item that I didn't quite understand, is Brett, Brett had a conversation about this, uh, because I, I listen to that YouTube video a lot, okay? So, is, is that, the recapture, number five, capturing funds from the inmate that owe you money. That seemed like a big deal to me. And I thought, when he walked out of here, I thought, I thought that HomeWave was doing that. Then, but they're not doing that. What I show you there is, is a clip right out of their response to the RFP. It basically says what we're already doing at the jail. Is, is that this device can be, you can shut off texting, you can shut off phones, you can shut off visitation, or, or a video visitation. You can shut them all off independently on each device, is you can do that. And that's what, that's what HomeWave's offering. I thought HomeWave was offering the ability to, to, to get money from these inmates that owe them money. I mean, that's what I thought. So, so Brett had told us that that was very important when we met with him in the demo. So what we did is what we built into our response is, is that we're gonna build, uh, the texting, so that we'll get a list from Brett that has a list of all the people that owe you money, okay? We'll have that list, and before we, before we send a message or let the inmate do any texting, receive a text, or send a text, we're gonna look at that list. And if that list shows that he's on that list, he's gonna be paying ten cents a text. Okay, I think that's more palatable to an inmate than taking money when he, when they make a five dollar, or a ten dollar payment, payment, take five dollars from him. That's gonna get people really frustrated. But in this case, this guy, he pays a penny? He pays a penny more? Well, think about it, though. This is that, how many text messages these guys are doing? And that guy typically is probably doing sixty to a hundred texts a day. So, so I mean, you're, you're collecting money every day, you know? You just add it up, it just keeps adding up. And you know, as you're getting your money back from these inmates. It's a great way to do it. Our guys have already went through the methodology of what we have to do to make it happen. And we definitely can do it, is all we need is to go ahead to do it. But as opposed to, to, they never proposed any way to capture this money back. I was totally shocked by that, uh, when I went back and, because I, I got a copy of their response to the RFP, the hundred and seventy-four pages. I read it cover to cover about four times. There's nothing in there, what's in there is just saying that they'll, they'll give the ability for you to stop the inmate from using the device. So let's go, let's go to the commission, the la, the last page, is, is that we have already doubled, is, is your revenue since two thousand sixteen. Once we put texting in, we doubled, we doubled your revenue over the course of the four years, is, is, as we've doubled it. We will also double that, because now, we just released this last year, and we've released it at the Grant Forks Jail. Is, is the inmate can do his phone calls on here. That didn't used to be possible, but now it is. He can do his video calls on here. It's all possible on this device. You just think about it, is, is they're using this ninety-two percent of the time already. Is, is that, that's because we released the voice and the video. Is is that that's because we released the voice and the video or we haven't released the video yet, which will make you more money. But they do voice and texting on this device is is that uh that's that releasing the voice is gonna double your revenue again. Because you think about it, is the way the situation is, was or was, used to be is is that the inmate had to walk up to the wall. Everybody could listen to him talk to his wife. TV's blaring, you know, and he's trying to have a conversation with his kids, his wife, friend or whoever, and everybody could hear. On this deal, we give him a small two-foot headset is is that he can have a private, he can sit down on his bunk and he have a quiet conversation with his wife. That's a big deal. That that makes like the calls double and triple because we do that. And it is. It is just because they can have a private phone call. It's a big deal to an inmate. Okay, let's just take a look. Uh, as I said, ninety-two percent of the calls is is that voice and video. They call anyone. They call anyone to fifty states that are not blocked. And then and uh they can text anyone to fifty states and anybody in the fifty states can text the inmate. They don't have to set up an account. They could if they get the inmate's number is they can text them back. That brings up a lot of good information for investigators. And uh we will outperform home wave eight to one. Is is that we will send eight texts to their ever one message. Is is that we've replaced other jails and that's the ratio that we follow is is that is it because it takes so much to get a message set up and to make a message? In ours, boom, it's just like your phone. You can send a text to anybody you want to. Okay, so is is that I go down here, we're guaranteeing fifty-eight dollars a month. And the way I came up with that, number four on here. Is is that in two thousand twenty, we had an average of fifty-two point five seven dollars per inmate per month is what your commission was. We added five forty-three because we're gonna be adding video calling to it. But we took a look at at this current this year is is that we're already up to sixty-seven point two-nine. We would we will increase your your the fifty-eight up to what your actual is 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 that. So you're up to sixty-two point two-nine. I don't think it's gonna hold at that. Reason that the reason it blew up like that is because all the money that the feds gave away. You can see it. March and April just blew up is is that is is that all kinds of money was coming in and and it was coming from from that source. So but at the end of the year, we'll reevaluate and we can increase the fifty-eight up to whatever that your average is. It could even go as high as seventy. It just depends on what video calling does. Home wave, okay, home wave offers sixty-five percent, but but it's with a caveat. Is is that it offers sixty-five percent on phones. But this is what I don't understand. Home wave charges you for the internet. Why? I mean, I I don't get that. Is is that if they're streaming video out of the jail is why were why are they charging you for the internet? That should be their cost, you know? I mean, I don't get that. So whatever internet cost, but then you but you don't know what that internet cost is because I looked through the whole proposal. They don't define what that is. They don't define what the cost recovery fees are. There's no definition. So you have no idea. All these things are taken off of that sixty-five percent. These these are removed from your commission is is then add-on fees. Is that was the other thing too is is, you know, Brett was talking about uh education. They charge you five bucks a day for education. We do it all for free, but they charge you five bucks a day for it. Excuse me, five, excuse me, five bucks a month for each inmate. You know, so that's a that's basically what close to a thousand bucks a month, you know, taken away for that. I mean, we'll do it for free. You give us any stuff, we'll add it to, you know? If you can work with somebody who who wants to help inmates, we we can add that that information to here too. And we can do it with video, audio or with with uh written material. And any any of those accommodations thereof, we can do it all. But yeah, that's the thing you beware of is is they're gonna take the internet costs, they're gonna take cost recovery fees and the add-on fees. And there's no information about what those really are. Is is there's no definition of what that is. They should have put a definition of what that is, but it's wide open. That it could be anything. You know, the internet, did you pay it for both ends of the internet or just the internet at the jail? You don't know. And and you won't know until you get into it. This is I I wanna say this is I get a little fired up, I apologize, but uh it's important to me. This definitely is a situation and and I know I I've been a commissioner before too. Uh, I was for the Water Light over in East Grand Forks for six years. I know what you're up against, okay? I'm not just a a resident complaint, okay? I have solid information here that I've shared with you. It's very valid information and tell you what, I will sit down with you. I will back it up. I will give you the documents and the data and I will back it up. But I'm just like that opportunity is is that this is this is one decision that warrants reconsideration. Is is that the information that was presented to you was incorrect and incomplete. There's a lot of information that wasn't shown to you guys and and it makes a big difference on what your decision would have been. If you would have all this information, I doubt that you would have decided to go with home wave. I I doubt it very highly, but none of that information, none of this information was discussed properly. And and that's what my argument is, is is that now that you have this information, what do we do with it? I think I think we should reevaluate that decision. Is I will sit down with anybody. I will work through it. I will explain it. I'll I'll explain everything I showed you and told you. Is is that I'd be glad to work with you. Is, you know, it's a difference between right and wrong, okay? If I'm not just a complaining taxpayer, there's something wrong about this. Is you have the best system available to you. You already had it. And 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 we can increase it. We can improve it and and we already are, you know, with with some of the ideas that Brett gave us. You know, about getting the money back from the the inmates. We'll do that. We'll we'll do the changes that he suggested. We'll work with them and and get those things done. You have it right here in Grand Forks. Why go to Kansas City? It doesn't make any sense to me. And and for a lesser system. Honestly, God, I've been doing this thirty-two years. I know what I'm talking about. I have people that come to us. We have three other inmate providers across this country that come to us. They're using our technology for a reason. It's because they're getting more jails with it. They're beating competition with it. It's because our technology is that good. And and that's just what it is, is is that it is that good. Well, I probably took a lot of you guys, a lot of me too, but I appreciate you listening to me here beyond. Is is that I really hope that you reconsider, uh, you know, give it some thought. I I think she probably would be better served if they did. You know, I think it's the right thing to do. Is is that I hope they have given you enough information that uh that you will make that decision. Anybody have any questions?
Okay, so what's the process from here? That's what I'm going to be asking Mr. Ford. Okay, so thank you. Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Mr. Burkholder, do you have any comments that you wanna state?
Madam Chair member of the commission, uh, thank you for the opportunity to address me today. This was a a big process. As I came to you last time, I had over fifteen hundred pages of RFP that myself and four other people looked at. It was extensive. I've known Mr. Hanks Levin for all those thirty-two years and I believe even longer. Is it only thirty-two though, Dave?
Yeah, thirty-two.
Okay, I thought we were in thirty-three or thirty-four. It's it's been forever. Uh, I knew, uh, and I've been dealing with reliance since the late eighties. So when the committee looked at all this, you know, it's it's hard for me with that relationship to to look elsewhere and so forth, but it was not my decision. It was a committee decision that looked at this. And then we have to understand that the committee did not make, we, I did not stand before you and make a presentation of all the different presentations. What I did is give you a presentation of what the committee recommended. In other words, a summary of what we as a committee thought was the best for Grand Forks County. If what Mr. Hanks Levin says is true, that his technology can produce eight to one ratio. You would think commission would be reflective of that. It would only seem to make sense. If you're doing eight times as much business and earning a commission, you'd get eight times as much commission. His guaranteed commission, as he told you, was gonna be fifty-eight dollars a month. Flat fifty-eight, not a minimum monthly guarantee, flat fifty-eight. And I verified that in an email to him asking for clarification, and that's what I was told, fifty-eight. There are two other vendors of which we did not as a committee select that had sixty-five dollars a month, minimum monthly guarantee. Meaning the minimum we would give is sixty-five dollars for that ADP. Or if we produced more, we would get more. We had another company bid in an annual of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Which if you use an ADP of two hundred, that equates to seventy-five dollars a day. So the committee, we looked at that and thought, how does fifty-eight compare to seventy-five? How does it compare to sixty-five? It's much less. And if we were with reliance today, using this proposed contract right now to have the same income that we have in the first five months of two thousand twenty-one. We would need would have need to have seventy-four more inmates in the facility today, every day to make the same amount based on a fifty-eight dollar a month guarantee. A fifty-eight dollars did not include video visitation, of which has tripled since turnkey corrections who currently supplies it. Made it available via mobile. That being said, our communications commission per inmate last year was fifty-nine dollars and fifty-six cents. A buck and a half more than reliance's proposal. The first five months of this year, it is high. It's at eighty-three, eighty-three. A lot of that, I I believe, is, as Mr. Hanks Levin said, is a a direct reflection of people having money from the stimulus and and such that, you know, I don't expect to see it there at the end of the year, but I will tell you it's arisen every month. It keeps going up. It's one of the factors that I do track. As the comments as to what the capability of home wave can do versus his and messaging, if you have questions. We actually have a salesman that presented to the committee in the room here, as well as the president of home wave is on the screen via Zoom. So if there were questions or clarification, those would be the experts on that, not myself. But I would entertain if there's any questions, so I would answer the commission. I would entertain those.
Go ahead.
Who was on the committee?
Commissioner Hanks and members of the commission. It was myself, my captain and three lieutenants. There were five of us.
So you know the financial assistance evaluating their plug? What proposal versus another?
Not per se, no. We had five of us in there dissecting it and building a spreadsheet of what pluses and minuses of the of the various vendors at the show.
One more follow-up. We heard a lot of statements from Mr. Hanks Levin and he handed out materials that seemed to make drawn up to make logical sense. What did he say that was wrong?
Well, um, Commissioner Hanks and members of the commission, I don't believe the internet is to be charged to Grand Forks County. I don't think there's a, I don't think that's correct. Home wave's bid was twenty cents a minute. Reliance does charge twenty-five cents a minute as per taxes. Not our notes, the committee notes say nothing was noted by home wave. We are aware of that. We also noted that it's forty cents a minute from reliance if you do use a phone card. That was no, uh, that was correct. Let me see. What wasn't stated that the committee looked at was voiced biometrics. When you talk of investigation, Mr. Hanks talked of the Chicago FBI. There's no question that with his texting and stuff, the ability to go into a written document and text out words is very powerful. And it his product works very well for that. You can go in there and search just as he said. From what I'm told of home wave and many of the other vendors, we can do the exact same thing what they showed us. We can search through all their messages the same way. Voice biometrics, knowing that the person on the phone is who they are. That was in a an optional component of which reliance was going to charge via their proposal seventy-five cents a minute. To have voice biometrics. As an investigator, ex Sheriff Ross can understand the importance of knowing who's on that phone and being able to prove to a ninetieth percentile that this person is who we believe it to be. Home wave's proposal had one cent per minute. Some of them were included in the proposal, so that that was uh that wasn't not misstated. It just wasn't stated. Other than I didn't take real good notes of everything. I'm sorry about what he was saying. I thought the home wave individuals are better prepared to address some of those things.
Mr. Falk, you have a question?
Yes, did you take into consideration that uh reliance of the local company?
Commissioner Falk, members of the commission, absolutely. The fact that reliance is right here in Grand Forks and within, as I would say, five minutes of the facility was considered highly. We didn't feel that that was enough of a factor to weigh the committee's recommendation. It was a factor we considered, absolutely.
Right, it's a factor when I get calls at home about service. And so I want that service in town. Where's home wave's service? Where are they at? Where are they gonna come? Yeah, where are they gonna come from when you got a problem?
Commissioner Falk, um, and the the home wave people can correct me if if I'm wrong, my understanding is a contract with local providers. So the the service technician would be someone local.
I I I kind of liked Mr. Hanks Levin's presentation on texting. I looked I looked at my poll and I probably, you know, I, when I first heard about texting, it was many years ago and I thought, well, this is a kid's stuff there. Everybody does it. I probably use, you know, twenty texts for every phone call or or probably fifty for every message I ever sent out. So I think it is a big deal. And the the other thing about it is it says I don't worry quite so much about the money part of it. It's, I I'm kind of concerned that most of our people in the crack cell center are indigenous. And it seems to me it's cheaper for them to send a text and easier than it is to get into the messaging process. So I mean, I I I wanna simplify it for them if I can.
Commissioner Falk, if I may, uh, my understanding with home wave is they can turn that feature on and off as to whether or not it requires someone to register. So in other words, they can open it up so you can just message someone.
Right, but doesn't it cost fifty cents for their messages?
No.
What does it cost?
Mr. Burkholder, if there's any appropriate time for me to come in, let me know and apologize for the interruptions. Discuss anything, answer any of these questions.
Commissioner Falk, is it all right if I?
Yeah, what is the cost on the message?
On the message, um, I got a quarter of a cent to ten cents. That's what our notes. The fifty cents was a video message. And I don't have a cost for reliance for a video message. We did not have that.
I could answer that question if you wanted to, okay, please. Oh, well, it's twenty-five cents a minute and is is that we bill on the per second. So if they want to do a thirty-second, it would be half that price, so it'd be twelve and a half cents.
Mr. Burkholder, at this point, we've got vendor who's making an appeal based on the decision that your group made. I'm sure there's a whole, and that Mr. Ford is unavailable right now. I'm sure there's a whole process if we were to go and, oh, there you are, Mr. Ford. There's a whole process that we need to follow, Mr. Ford, if there is an appeal by a vendor. Is that correct?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, there, there is a process and I would actually defer to Ms. Womstead on advising the board on how to proceed.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, this type of bidding project is outside the requirements for what needs to be publicly bid. And so I don't know, I can't recall if Mr. Burkholder's request for proposal provided for any type of appeal process in, in what he outlined for his process. I can't recall specifically that it did.
If I may, I believe the RFP had the ability in there to negotiate, but not, there was nothing stated to appeal.
So at this point, since there was no specifications in the RFP, if if I, I would, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. State's attorney, but at this point, if, let's say, the group, the working group that you had would want to reevaluate something, would we have to reopen up the RFP again? Or would they be able to just meet again and reevaluate the vendors that have already sent in their information?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, if I recall correctly, the last commission meeting, the, the proposal was accepted. Is that correct, Mr. Burkholder? I'm not sure if a contract has yet been signed.
It has not because of, of the appeal we were waiting.
I can certainly research if the law outlines a different process and report back to the board.
I think that would be very helpful. So what we'll do is at this point, we will take this appeal process and move it forward, and it will be on the agenda for the second meeting in July. And then we'll again address, you know, find out what the law is and then go forward from there.
I'll be prepared for the next.
Okay. That work for you, Mr. Burkholder?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I just want to make sure I understand. So we stand still for now?
Yes.
And wait until next meeting? And is there anything that you need me to do to prepare for that that you would like?
I don't.
My thought is this is not a thirty-minute process at our next meeting. I wonder if we shouldn't have a special meeting on it because we haven't even heard from Homewave yet, but I hear a lot of good things from Mr. Hank Slaven. And if our counters back and forth, we have to be nimble. If we're gonna make a decision, nothing, I'm not saying anything bad about your committee or whatever. You guys work your tail off on doing these kinds of things. But we're the ones that have to answer to the public about did we make the right choice or not this way? So I think we should set aside more than a half an hour in the, in the meeting for it. I don't know when we would do it. I'm not in favor of special meetings at all, but.
We could certainly have an administrative services committee meeting prior to, well, and we run into a, a time factor again. Because the two o'clock meeting is for the social services board meeting on the next meeting. So when do these, when do these contracts need to be signed, Mr. Burkholder?
Commissioner Page, members of the commission, they are in nimble right now as they would have expired on June thirtieth. And the way it was written is that there would be time to enter contract. I mean, it's not, if we were to change, it's not a simple process. Mr. Hank Slaven has lots of equipment in, in the building as well as turnkey corrections. So even if there was a change in the video visitation, there's still a lot of equipment that needs to be changed out. Because turnkey corrections was not considered for video visitation or not recommended, I should say.
Well, and I don't know if an hour is going to be an adequate amount of time to discuss this. I'm thinking that we should probably, if the commission is in agreement, I'm thinking that on July thirteenth, which is a Tuesday, we should probably have a meeting starting at three o'clock of the commissioner, of the administrative services. Would that work for you, Mr. Falk? And other commissioners?
Does the, that's not a commission date or that is?
That's a non-commissioned.
That's only a week.
Right.
I don't know if that's enough time. It just turns out to be. Yeah.
That should be sufficient.
And what about if the committee is going to just take another look at the appellate, the appeal, the appeal and, and the, the one that was awarded the agreement? Would that work for you, Mr. Burkholder?
Commissioner Page, members of the commission, I will gladly bring the committee together to look and dissect those two proposals as perceived from Homewave and Reliance, that's the wishes of the commission.
Hi. Okay. I apologize to all of you that includes another day that is a non-commission date. But we already have a commitment on the second meeting every month with the social services board. And that is always at two PM, which goes until usually four PM. So by taking our administrative services meeting and having it on a Tuesday at three PM, that would give us some non-rushed time to have some discussion on this, hopefully running at three until five and be completed by then. And then we could move into the final decision-making the following week at the commission meeting. Is that okay? Does that work, Ms. Swanson? Does that work out for you guys?
So you're still looking at the thirteenth?
Yes.
I'm sorry, can we say that date one more time?
Seven, seven thirteen next Tuesday.
Seven thirteen, which is a Tuesday, and we will need central standard time from three, three PM at three PM in this chamber, and hopefully we would be accomplished by five. Okay, so we have that on the agenda for next time. So thank you very much, Mr. Burkholder, and thank you also, Mr. Hank Slaven for your. And thank you to the other vendor too for participating, and we hope to see you next time as well. Okay, then, we move on to public health. Ms. Swanson, you are going to do a COVID nineteen update.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, in the interest of time today, I sent out my report, which is basically our health officer dashboard. And once again, our dashboard is in the green. We have low testing and low case numbers. And we are slowly inching up our vaccination rate. The numbers increased between fifty and a hundred and fifty per day over the weekend, the holiday weekend, we had a hundred and forty-two. So then, those are doses administered in Grand Forks County. So they're, they're very low. We hope that with the reception of school in the fall and children twelve years and older being able to be vaccinated, we will start to see those numbers creep up a little bit more quickly. Our outreach efforts are going well. And I just want to continue to thank the commission for your support and for a meeting with me recently to find out what are ongoing and continued needs might be related to COVID recovery, I'm calling it now. And further, I would like to ask for the agenda item to be removed as a standing item on your meetings. But if the commission chooses to invite us to present, we would be happy to do that. Or if we find a need to bring you new information, we would request to be placed on the agenda if that is agreeable with all of you. Our dashboard will continue. We have a new data person, Rachel, and she will send out the dashboard daily or over the weekend, it comes out on Monday, if that's agreeable with you. And I am here to answer any questions.
I missed the fifty to a hundred and fifty vaccinations per day in Grand Forks County?
Those are doses administered, Commissioner. Doses administered, so they might be first doses or second dose in Grand Forks County, correct, yes. So we still have in the neighborhood of about nine thousand people who are vaccine eligible that have not yet been vaccinated. So it's still a pretty significant number.
Any other questions?
You were going to do outreach to some of the, the smaller cities and, you know, in different parts of the county. And so what kind of response are you getting?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, commissioner, I'll get those numbers for you. I, I should have brought those today. We do a running total of all of our sites. And in Grand Forks County, our sites are not in Raremore, Northwood, because those are served by other entities. But our sites in Mandeville and Gilby and Thompson and I'm missing one. I can get you that information for those. And they're held like on every four-week schedules and alternating times. So I'll get that in full for you. Thank you. I'm just curious.
Are people flocking to those mobile sites or not? Not, I mean.
We are not seeing people flock, no. But we're there, we're available. Our busiest outreach site continues to be Hugo's on Thirty-Second Avenue South, where we see people shopping, just doing their daily business, and they stop in to get vaccinated. But at our mobile sites, the numbers are smaller, but we're catching people because they're there.
My understanding is that you had a mobile site in there?
We did.
What kind of a response did you get?
Those numbers will be included with the report. We've also held one or two at the River City Speedway. And we do that in partnership with our partners that are helping us with this mobile outreach, and that includes Walz, their pharmacy program, and then also Wellcore Health. So those are the two that I believe have been helping at those two sites. But yes, we did.
Okay, well, good. Curious just to see the numbers as all, hopefully, you know, I mean, we know that it's smaller groups and whatnot, in smaller areas, but
Madam Chair, members of the commission, if I could just add on that point, you won't see perfect alignment with Grand Forks County numbers and doses administered, as you will with our sites, because obviously we vaccinate anybody who comes to our sites, regardless of where they live, because we, we want to see people vaccinated. So you won't see perfect alignment. So our numbers will look, you know, just a little bit different, but you will get numbers by site.
So Ms. Swanson, would it be okay, probably not to include public health on the agenda for the second meeting in July, but possibly for the first meeting in August? Maybe we could switch, switch to like once a month until things start to really level off, and then it could be less at your request. Would that be okay?
Madam Chair, that would be fine. Thank you.
Okay. Why don't we plan to do that for at least August and September, and then we'll evaluate it at that point?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. The next item on our agenda is Emergency Management Director.
Madam Chair, I got a message from, from Kari that she is still in an emergency management planning meeting. It's gone long, but she wanted me to relay to the board that she didn't have anything to report today.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you very much. Then the next item is Highway Engineer, Mr. West.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Just a tidbit, on, on more complicated highway jobs, it is common to be interviews after RFPs if it's tough to select from paper. We haven't had too many of those projects in Grand Forks County because most of what we can afford to do is pretty simple and straightforward. But at the higher levels, the state, the DOT would interview almost all the time, really. So just throwing that out there, that interview might be appropriate too, but it sounds like you're doing that already. I have two items for consideration today. That near as complicated as the first item. But we, we did our, we did conduct a bid for our County Five paving project. Previously, I did mention doing a small project on Tyre Road Seventeen, but due to budget constraints and watching prices go up, we had to cut that. And we hope to come back to that next year. But so we, we did a bid. It was uneventful, which is good. All the bonding was in place. And the results are there in front of you. We had great interest and a lot of questions from contractors. I think they're hungry for work, which was good for us. But oil prices are what they are, and we're still at higher prices than we had hoped. But the low bid is Knife River at two hundred and sixty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars and forty-five cents. Coincidentally, there are also the paving contractor on the US Two paving job. The asphalt portion, most of that's concrete, but they're doing the asphalt tie-ins, so they did save some money on mobilization. But this is not a, this was not a specifically budgeted item for us. We are taking it out of our construction funds. We do have the money to do it, but it was not a specific budgeted item. With that, entertain any questions and, and ask for approval of Knife River and signatures on that contract.
Do you have any questions? What are the wishes of the commission?
Sure. Approval of the Knife River bid.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion, I think by adding? With your signature.
That's a good idea.
Yeah. Okay. All right, we have a, a motion in the second. Is there any discussion? If there is no discussion, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried.
Thank you. My second item for consideration is something probably a little new to the board. I don't think I've ever come before the board with such a request, but we have some of our county roads are, we call CMC miles, county major collector. Those are the roads that are on our federal aid system. And we can use federal aid dollars on those roads. The roads that are not federal aid, we can not use federal money on them. And the county has paid those a hundred percent. Well, in working through our paving project for, for next year, most of the roads are federal aid, so, but some are not. And so, and in talking to the MPO, because a portion of the Dunn Columbia Road, or we call it County Road Seventeen, is in the MPO interest, trying to get approval from them. And working through the, the Federal High Administration, the DOT, we noticed that there was one, one location in particular in the Northwood area that things aren't very, are not accurate. And then they brought up the fact that on Seventeen, maybe we should change it to be in federal eligible. Because our County Road Seventeen lines up with Columbia Road, and that is in Bourbon material. And it would make sense that the county system, the county major collector system ties up with that. So my, in, in looking at this, I, I would like to request the board make some modifications to our overall map. And, and you probably can't see this, but on one of your pages, I mean, this is our map of the county. We have two pages, but. Yeah. Maybe the next page. I had, I had one of them scanned in. Yeah, that one. That's the south half of the county.
Should I scroll down?
And that's fine. All right there. Yeah, that's the south half of the map, which is what we're concerned with, but that the numbers that have eighteen in front of them, those are the designations of our county map. So like eighteen twenty-five out of Emmeral, that's County Road Three. But behind the scenes, when we, when I talk to the state and the feds, I call it eighteen twenty-five. That, nobody else needs to know that. The public doesn't need to know that for even the. That, nobody else needs to know that. The public doesn't need to know that for even the board really doesn't pertain to anything. Particularly other than the fact that we can use federal aid on it. And that's what we call it for funding purposes. But one, one thing in the Northwood area that is incorrect and has been for decades is eighteen fifteen. That goes, well, there's a spur that goes right through downtown Northwood. We call it downtown Main Street, maybe would be the right term. And then there's a three mile leg of it that goes past the golf course. It hasn't been on our map. I don't know why. I don't know why it's on there. And it's one of those things that when you look at it, you're like, yeah, I don't want to deal with that today. But it's time to clean it up. And the DOT noticed it because they asked about it. They're like, let's just clean it up and get things accurate. So my proposal is, is to remove the two segments of eighteen fifteen that are not even a county road. And, and then add the mile of County Road Twelve on the east side of Northwood. To make, to make that a federal eligible, which is County Road Twelve. And we do maintain that. And that would be appropriate, and it would have the logical terminate. And, and the folks at the DOT thought that would be a good idea. The other portion would be is then to add the three. Four point eight miles on County Road Seventeen to make that request to the state. And all we can do is make the request. This board does not have the authority to make the change. We can make the recommendation and ask for it. And then the state has given me a verbal approval. It would be submitted to Federal Highway, and then they would authorize it, yes or no. The good part about this is, is if we get County Road Seventeen eligible, or basically put it on the map. And when we pave it next year, eighty percent of the cost share would come from the, from the feds. So it would save us some cash. I think that all sums up. Any questions?
Questions? I have a questioner. So on, on this map. And we've got Northwood there, and so the eighteen fifteen, we're going to. Yeah, both of them, I think are not county roads. My question is, is that over here. Yellow line, I don't know what yellow line, green line, although yours is in color and mine isn't. That's why. Okay, but so this one is County Road Twelve, and we want to add that. And then this one is down here.
Yeah, do you get scanned in in color? I'm sorry.
It isn't scanned in in color.
Oh, it is scanned in in color.
She's got a black and white copy, but it is scanned in color.
Okay, so then we got County Road Twelve down here.
So the way.
So in there, that one, we're not going to change. Is that one a C, whatever, already?
It is already, yes.
All right, so that's why we're going to leave it as is, and we'll just change this one.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions?
The one that saves the mileage you resurfaced years ago from Highway Fifteen over to, or Twelve.
So right now, County Road Twelve is the yellow line and the red line.
Right.
And that's our County Road Twelve. The red part is federal aid, the yellow part is not. I would like to change it, that the yellow line becomes federally eligible.
Sure.
And then that would replace the green line and that blue line.
The green line is a gravel road and used to be Highway Fifteen.
Correct.
So you want to remove that, but could we be getting some help on that road through, through the fence?
Well.
It is going to.
See, it's not. It's a township road.
It's a township road.
So we have been getting, essentially. We get. Our federal aid is, there's a formula for it. Part of it is how many miles we have. So in a way, yes, we have been getting funding allocated to the county that we have used on our federal aid routes. To use it here. We don't even claim it as a county road.
So it's one of my changes, township, so it's not a big issue.
Right. Nobody, it wouldn't change anything in the field. Public wouldn't, I won't say this, they wouldn't even know the difference. Yeah, I say that very gently, you know. From the public standpoint, they wouldn't know.
And the blue line is coming out too because it's not a county road?
The blue line is, 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 is a CMC road. I propose to take it off because it's a city of Northwood Road.
Right.
All right.
And our county road would, then, so the next time we want to overlay County Road Twelve, we could use federal aid on the whole works. Or last time we did it, we used the oil money.
Oh, yeah.
And, well, we had two different pots of oil money. One had to be used in federally, one didn't. So it's.
So do we know why it wasn't a CM? CMC or CMS? CMC, why this one, County Road Twelve, the yellow line, why, why it wasn't? Why it wasn't coded properly? We don't know.
I don't know that answer, Commissioner Knopf.
Okay.
I'm, I'm assuming it was because. It connected up on the blue and green lights. But it wasn't a deed for it?
Okay. Sounds good to me.
Yeah.
So basically, what Mr. West has supplied us with is he would like the motion to approve the CMC functional classification modifications as follows, see maps. Number, letter A, remove approximately three point eight miles of CMC eighteen fifteen on Fourth Avenue Northeast from Thirty Seventh Street Northeast to forty, Thirty Fourth Street Northeast. B, remove approximately one mile of CMC eighteen fifteen spur on North Raymond Street and North Main Street. C, add approximately one point sixteen miles to CMC eighteen fifteen, County Road Twelve on Thirty Fourth Street Northeast. And D, add approximately four point eight miles to CMC Route of CR Seventeen between CR Eighty-One and Sixty Second Avenue South. That is the motion.
Motion to approve. The motion is read by the chairman.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Any discussion? If there is no discussion, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion is carried. So now you can take that then, Mr. West, to the state and see if they will agree with that proposal?
That is correct.
Wonderful. What kind of timeframe are we looking at usually?
It's got to be quick because we're bidding in November.
Oh, okay.
So, Maro?
You kind of have inside information that they're in favor of, don't you?
It's already been pre-approved at the state level.
Speed is speed here.
Yeah.
Anything else, Mr. West?
No, well, just a little tidbit, that the part of County Road Seventeen, I included in the packet back in twenty, two thousand and ten. This board already did approve, but nothing was ever done with it. It was never followed through with on the backend, so. We're going to follow through, yeah.
Okay, and also our issues that we're having with County Road Five that intersects with US Highway Two. I'm sure we'll be looking at again with the MPO. Correct?
Probably, yes. And I'm told that next week, that'll be back to four lanes.
Okay.
That was the plan a month ago, but, hey, they've got, I know they're ahead of schedule. They told me that, so.
That's good.
Yeah, that'll be able to back up and run in and back to normal anyway.
And Mr. West did inform me that the water truck did try to keep the, the dust down for visibility on the, the county road that they used, but that was not adequate enough. And there was an accident that did occur, going across the road. Just so you're aware of, there were measures done as much as we possibly could to try to mitigate any more accidents.
Commissioner, that was. To try and route traffic on township roads, if US Two traffic in rural township road, I don't, they didn't have a choice. But the dust was astronomical. Just, it was horrible. We were, we were, had our water truck out there watering. Contractor had their water truck out there watering as well too. So, you know, it helped, but you couldn't get on all the roads, and people were driving and just spitting off in all directions and.
Yeah.
It was just a bad deal.
Yeah, it was. It was. And I'm sure that there'll be continued discussions with the MPO about the safety of people probably on US Highway Two, as well as on County Road Five. So those discussions. What?
I'm sure we'll be talking about it.
Yes, I'm sure you will be. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. West. The next item on the agenda is the Finance and Tax. Ms. Nelson?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, we have the twenty twenty-two preliminaries budget in front of you. The budget is four hundred thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars greater in the net levy than it was last year. Infinited, that is a four percent cost of living increase for all employees, January first, twenty twenty-two. A two percent market adjustment, April first, twenty twenty-two. That includes the state's attorney, sheriff and commission in the colon market increase. A three percent step increase for all qualified employees on their twenty twenty-two seniority date. That's about one point two million dollars. Most of it's from the general fund. Health insurance, we received an increased range of zero to five percent. We put a five percent increase based on their actual cost for twenty twenty-one so far. And that was a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Most of that from the general fund. We included staff increase for the Emergency Management Department. They had a three quarter or thirty, thirty hour employee increase to full time. As you mentioned, had one full time position that was offset by some of their hourly employees that you no longer have in twenty twenty-two. And there was a position added for a rural school resource officer if the sheriff's department receives a federal grant. Other changes included in the twenty twenty-two budget was, capital improvement budget was increased from seven hundred and fifty thousand in twenty twenty-one to two million dollars in twenty twenty-two. Bonds will not be levied for in twenty twenty-two. They will be paid off in twenty twenty-one. The road levy was increased from eight point five one mils to ten mils, which is the maximum allowed without a vote. To help pay for some of the culverts that we need out in the county. We need about twenty-five million dollars worth of culvert, so that will help. The extra will help towards that. We will be using about two point eight million dollars in the general fund to keep the mills at forty-eight point seven eight. If, if we lowered the capital improvements to what we normally levy a million dollars. We, and we didn't use cash, we'd be at fifty-seven mils with the general fund. We're allowed sixty as the max. I have given you a list of all the differences by department in the general fund. And you can see what we had in the twenty twenty-one budget compared to what's been requested for twenty twenty-two. And it's been included in the preliminary budget. So the one point one million dollars in salary increases. The one point two five million increase in the capital improvements. Some of the other increases were. The cost allocation for the correctional center went up a hundred and fifty-one thousand. Base retention was added a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars compared to what was included in the twenty twenty-one budget. Twenty twenty-two is an election year, so there's an additional hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars for that. There were, there's a couple extra grant positions totally one hundred percent offset by revenue, but there was a Vision Zero Coordinator in the sheriff's department for ninety-six thousand. And a, at the grant position, their, their rural grant position is eighty-one thousand, four hundred and four dollars of the full cost. Our cost will be about thirteen thousand five. Another thing is that the Siren twenty twenty program, there's a hundred and thousand dollars that was put in the twenty twenty-two budget that is one hundred percent offset by revenue. So if you were using one point nine five million dollars more in revenue or in cash. We are receiving a four hundred and six, or budgeting to receive four hundred and six thousand dollars more in revenue. The total increase for the general fund is just nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars, or a three point eight two percent increase in special revenue. One thing to note here is the one point four million dollars that we will no longer have to levy for because we're going to pay all the bonds off this year. So the special revenue is an increase of a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. We've got an increase for the water board of a hundred thousand dollars, but they had in a prior year agreed to lower their request by a hundred thousand to help the county out to lower their levy earlier. So now they need the money back, so they put the money back in their budget. A lead board, eighty-five thousand dollar increase. They have additional needs, and they did come before the Administrative Services Committee to explain that the. Seventy-five thousand dollars for the ambulance, that's a six mil levy approved by the voter. So whatever six mils generates, they, that's the increase they're going to get. The total budget is four point four million dollars greater, twelve percent. Have almost three million dollars cash more than last year. We have over a million dollars in revenue more than last year. So our net levy dollar increase is four hundred thousand, one fifty-five, or one point six one percent increase over last year. The value of a mil increased approximately eighty-five hundred dollars, two point six two percent. Citizens of Grant Forks and their, the portion of the, the property tax bill relating to the county will go down approximately one point one five mils. And Grant Forks County outside the city would go down point two five mils. The dollars generated from the valuation increases approximately seven hundred thousand. And had we not received that increase, we'd see a two mil, two mil increase without that valuation. Increase. Savings on a two hundred thousand dollar home with a point two five mil decrease would be two, ten dollars and thirty-five cents on the county portion of the tax bill, and two hundred thousand. Commercial property would be eleven dollars and fifty cents. Our contracted services. We saw a decrease of twelve thousand dollars in youth works. That is for the divert program. Lutheran Social Services had the divert program and Healthy Families Program for twenty-six thousand. Youth Works will only be providing the divert program for fourteen, so that the savings are twelve. CBICs will be funded at a hundred thousand or fourteen thousand, ninety-seven dollars more than they had in twenty twenty-one. And then Safe Kids is a new one that we approved in twenty twenty-one. And we, that was after budget time for twenty-five thousand, so that's a twenty-five thousand dollar increase. The emergency fund is included at point four and six mils, which will generate about a hundred and fifty-two thousand. We levied point two three mils last year. I increased the levy because of all the flood events in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. And that's where we pay our sheriff's funds. So I'm slowly reimbursing that fund. We currently have, or projected to have at the end of this year, one point one million dollars. We are allowed to, we are not allowed to levy if our cash balance is above what five mils would generate, which would be over one point six million. So we are okay. So we are uh okay there, levying the point four six mils. And I have uh the revenue, most of our revenue come from property tax or seventy-one percent in twenty twenty-two. Um, our other county revenue is um twelve percent. I have, our main one is prisoner board payments and that has been steadily decreasing over time. We're at one point one million for that. Uh, we get uh sixteen percent from the state and uh very little from the federal government debt, a hundred and six. Our interest income is a quarter of one percent, at eighty thousand dollars for the year. Um, all other miscellaneous items are one point two million dollars or sixty-four miscellaneous line items that I haven't listed. Um, the notice of estimated property tax budget hearing, um, I will leave all budgeted by August tenth. Those notices must be submitted by August thirty-first. And they must have a date for the uh budget hearing listed on them and September seventh is the first date that we could have it. Um, I think we should do it that day. Are there any questions or requested changes on the budget? I'll just note now that this is the preliminary budget and once you approve this budget. I just cannot increase the budget and decrease.
Is there any questions of Ms. Nelson? Okay, what are the wishes of the commission?
If not, I need a motion to approve the twenty twenty-two preliminary, preliminary budget as presented. Which includes a four percent cost of living increase on January first, twenty twenty-two. A two percent market on April first, twenty twenty-two to include the sheriff's. Uh, our sheriff, the state's attorney and commission and a step increase for all qualified employees on their seniority date in twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If there is no discussion, assuming a roll call, vote all those in favor of the motion signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Anything else, Ms. Nelson?
No, thank you.
Okay, then Director of Administration, Madam Chair.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the commission, thank you. Do I have just?
Wait, wait, wait. Ms. Nelson.
Don't need approval.
Yes, I would like approval, maybe.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, the uh, we need uh an approval of the September seventh budget hearing.
I'll make that motion and we want that edge. What time?
Four o'clock.
One o'clock. Okay, that's right, sorry.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All right, any discussion? If there is no discussion, assuming a roll call, vote all those in favor of the motion signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried and I apologize for that. Okay, and I apologize for interrupting you, Mr. Ford. Take it away.
Not a problem, Madam Chair, thank you. Um, I, I just have two things for the, for the board's consideration. The first is uh, is to approve a contract management. Um, or a project management contract, if you will, between the county and AE two S. Uh, this is a project engineering and project management for the chiller system that's gonna be replaced. Um, if you recall, we had to bid for this project engineering and project management contract because of the price tag. Um, Ms. Womsted has reviewed it. Um, I've reviewed it, it's pretty standard. Um, Ms. Womsted recommended some changes, AE two S made those changes. And we are comfortable with what's being presented. So asking for board's approval and chair's signature on this project engineering uh and management contract.
All right, are there any questions of the commission? Their cost to that forty-two thousand dollars for the con?
Yep. Um, yes, Madam, Madam Chair, Commissioner Knopf, yes, there, there, there is a flat, a total of flat forty-two thousand dollars for AE two S. To manage the project, which is one of the uh reasons the board selected AE two S is they were advertising an upfront cost instead of billable hours.
I'm sorry, is it forty-two thousand or forty-seven thousand?
Oh, forty-seven thousand, thank you.
Yeah, for true. I did say forty-two in the contracts. Are there any other questions of the commission? If there are no other questions, what are the wishes of the commission?
Motion to approve the project engineering and management contract with AE two S engineering and about forty-seven thousand dollars.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second? Oh, thank you, Ms. Knopf. Any discussion? If there is no discussion, assuming a roll call, vote all those in favor of the motion signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion is carried.
And the, the last thing I have, Madam Chair, is um a draft resolution from the Metro Flood Diversion Authority. They are by law required to establish an alternate dispute resolution board, which I mean basically. Uh, reviews claims by property owners under fifty thousand dollars if they have property uh damaged by the, the, the metro diversion project. They're asking the county to provide um one appointed officer to serve a two-year term on this um alternative. Uh, dispute resolution board. Um, i- it's worth noting that the board would not, um. I guess uh be created or put to work, if you will, until the project is underway. Which is uh estimated to be the year twenty twenty-eight. But, but they are asking um the county to appoint an officer to serve on this dispute resolution board. And I, I don't, I don't think you necessarily have to make a decision tonight. I think, I, I think Mr. Paulson would, would like one, but if you have questions for him. Um, I can certainly reach out and have him visit with you at the next commission meeting. Um, but uh anyways, he, Ms. Ms. Nelson did have, I think, a pretty good in-depth. Uh, proposal in your packet, so just, just wondering what the wishes of the board were and then I'm happy to get back to the Metro Flood Diversion Authority.
Okay, so they're looking for a commissioner that would uh participate on that authority?
Yes, ma'am.
And that would begin in twenty twenty-eight?
Correct.
Yes, that's what the, no way you said.
Yeah, so we hope we're not dead by then.
Oh, yeah, I don't think we can appoint anybody, there's nobody, their name is severe.
I have a question.
Yes.
Because it talks about an appointed officer, so does that have to be a commissioner or can that be?
Retro administration perhaps?
You. Well, you're, you, you're more liable to be here than we are.
Well, well, Madam Chair, the, you know, the, uh, Mr. Ingin always reminds me the director of administration is expendable, so. Um, but it, it, ma'am, to answer your question, it does not have to be a commissioner. I mean, it could be, for example, um, county engineer. Um, could be the, the director of administration. Um, it's, it's really board's preference.
Well, you need to decide, really.
Well, we could put, uh, there could be a motion that could say the uh director of administration. And whomever would be in that role, if that role was still existing, then that could be. And it could be and/or the county engineer.
Madam Chair. The uh, if I may, the draft resolution does provide some qualifications for somebody to be an officer. And it does state that the authority intends that individuals who serve as officers will have real estate, legal, financial, technical, engineering. And or appraisal experience. Um, so when submitting an appointment, an appointing entity will include a synopsis of the qualifications. Of the individual being appointed, so I'm not even sure it necessarily needs to be a county official. But just that it's this board's decision in selecting that person to forward on to that. One, one question I'm not sure about is, I don't, and Mr. Ford would know better than I. I don't know that the appointment needs to be made now. I think the resolution hasn't even been approved yet. And so it's maybe more for informational at this time, is that correct, Mr. Ford?
Oh, Madam Chair, Ms. Womsted, um, in, in my communication with Mr. Paulson. Um, they have a, a Metro Flood Diversion Authority meeting on the twenty-second. And he was hoping to communicate to, to the board on, uh, at that meeting that the county is uh going to appoint someone. So I think, I, i- if, like I said, I don't think you have to appoint someone today. Um, you definitely don't have to make any decisions today. And I can assure you, the current director of administration isn't an engineer or a real estate appraiser. So, um, they were looking to hopefully report back on the twenty-second that the counties, the county has uh appointed an official. But I, I mean, like I said, I think Ms. Womsted's right, you don't necessarily have to do it today. And I can go back and, and just state that the county is, is, is willing to participate. But we just have a few more questions as to uh what they're looking for, uh, when they would officially like to see someone appointed, et cetera.
I just don't know how we can appoint somebody that's seven years away from now. And um, you know, I can see making a motion if we have to, that the county will review that. As that time gets closer, but you know, at this point, I don't know if a verbal is good enough on that for them, I mean. I don't need a motion either.
Sir, asking for something to be appointed, someone to be appointed seven, seven years from now, I.
No, and even a commissioner doesn't have the qualification.
Committee might not even, it's seven years.
Yeah, I know.
It'll reach retirement.
So. Well, and please recognize that uh this is a, a very lengthy list of the counties that are included in this process. Up and down uh on the eastern side of the state. In, as well as some other groups, so it's, it's, it's quite a long list of individuals that they're reaching out to. So at this point, I don't think a vote is necessary. I agree with the rest of you. So this is, you can tell them we've accepted this for informational purposes and we will. Move on as uh, as necessary.
I will do that, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
And that, that's all I have.
Okay, the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources, including the North Dakota Office of State Engineer. And Mindak Upstream Coalition, including all the counties that are listed. So just so you're aware that it's quite a list. All right, um, now do, next on our agenda is Ms. Womsted for the state's attorney?
Madam Chair, I have nothing for the board today, thank you.
Okay, then we move on to committee reports. Uh, Mr. Paul.
Oh, I attended the mayor's, mayor's, mayor's base meeting, which was a normal meeting. Um, Mr. Sawyer was in town, talked to him, uh, nothing there. And then I told you at uh, at our ministry service meeting, I met with Icon of the jail, so that's where I met, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ross?
Uh, just uh, the doctor sins at the county coroner's office as their new vehicles, the up and running. And so he's very happy about that. Other than that, that's all I have.
Okay, Commissioner Ingin.
Last week I attended the Grand Sky uh presentation with the EDC and then the Chamber of Arters. Uh, well-attended event and very informational. I hadn't seen the building out there yet, but it's pretty, pretty great. Then brick this morning, Colonel Curry was there. Uh, he's now taking over from Colonel Pringle and he's got a lot on his plate. Apparently, everyone's really thrilled with him too, so that's all I got. I, I'm on the, we have Frontwood Housing Authority, at least for now, and uh, attended a long meeting there the other day.
Okay.
On the regular portfolio.
Commissioner Knopf. Uh, Grantworks County Fair was a big success and so we're gonna meet on the fourteenth. And so I'll have more specifics for you as far as numbers and things like that. But Hubos was selling um a lot of tickets for us out of Hubos and we couldn't keep them in stock. And so it was, it was good. And so I'm anxious to see the, the numbers, but got a lot of very positive comments from the community and so that was good, so. Be great. Um, and we have a new carnival this year too, a provider. And so that was, and they worked wonderfully well. And at least from my perspective and everything I heard, so I think that that would be, we're real limited on, on rivers in the circuit. This is a new company, so. Um, the nineteenth and the twentieth, I'll be attending the Layermore Down rehab meetings. On the nineteenth, there's a seven o'clock meeting, I think it's American nature, maybe Layermore. And then on the twentieth, there's going to be a field review of the, the down. And so I intend to go to that and participate. Um, twenty-first is Library Board. Twenty-second, I'm gonna also uh attend the City to Farm event. That's the Dries family that is south of Grantworks, um, that is doing that this year. And extensions involved with that, and so that's part of my portfolio, but kind of anxious to go out there. Sugar Beats is the, 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 the topic, so it'll be interesting event. And so, and other than that, outside of tomorrow being Mr. Ford's birthday. Just wanna extend happy birthday to him.
I think he's taken it.
I think.
Oh, he, he's jumped up, he's got an appointment, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Too late.
Okay, anything else?
That's all I have.
Yeah, I will be up, uh, going with Mr. Ford to the EDC meeting at the twenty, twenty-first.
Yes, yes.
So that's gonna be really interesting. And you're all invited to Northwood, the twenty-second, third, twenty-fourth for Old Fashioned Saturday weekend there.
Yeah, cool.
Robbie V is the entertainment on Saturday night.
In your news facility.
For some of us who remember Bobby V, I mentioned that to a group of about five people and none of them knew who Robbie V was. That's just, it's a little bit old.
I know Bobby and Robbie, both of them.
Good.
So that's good.
Looking for a good show, it's in the new auditorium, it's the first community event.
That'll be nice. Um, I did get, I have nothing to report. Um, I did get a notice from the state, there is some funding available. I believe that's the grant that Paris used uh at the state, at the parks, the county parks in Fordville. And um, Layermore for the emergency shelters a couple of, two, three years ago. And so I will uh scan that over to her in case it's, the deadline is September of, I think, September first of twenty twenty-one. And she may visit with the water board to see if there's any ideas or any upgrades they could do in those facilities. Um, other than that, Airport Authority is moving well on the projects for the runways. Uh, getting everything in line with Hampton Need, uh, the consultants, and so things are going well. Um, anything else for community reports? If not, then under unfinished new business, we already did go over the draft resolution. Mr. Ford uh presented on that. So the first one, we have the twenty twenty-one community block grant program. And that is done by the Red River Regional Council. And do they need anything or is this just a report? I think it's just a report to tell us about the facilities that are eligible. We anticipate there will be, okay, the purpose of the memo is to inform cities in region four. The Red River Regional Council will likely be soliciting a second round of applications for the community development block grant. We anticipate there will be approximately ninety thousand dollars available. The funding allocation for the year twenty twenty-one was two hundred and two thousand eight hundred and ninety-two dollars. So there is some CDVG money, community development block grant, and then some also some other funds. So this is just an FYI coming from the Red River Regional Council. coming from the Red River Regional Council.
I just have a comment on that, because when I was reading through that, in fact, about public facilities, things that this, this money could be, the grant could be applied for, for this, and so I just, I happen to think about some of our rural communities or smaller little cities, you know, because it talks about sanitary sewer, storm sewer, lift stations, lagoons, improvements, replacement of fire hydrants if they have them, street paving, reconstruction of streetlights, replacement of sidewalks, public safety such as fire hall, trucks, ambulances and related equipment, and removal of architectural barriers. You know, including sidewalks, public building entrances and restrooms, so I, I think I'll mention it to Cory for one thing with the public safety, but how do we reach out to our smaller communities to let them know that this may be available?
The Regional Council has reached out to them. Um, Gilby has redone, I think, some storm sewer and some sewers. Niagara has, they got a new lagoon. Um, I know in, in uh, Nelson County, Petersburg and Lakota have used some funds for uh, improving their sanitary system and their water lines. And I think Fordville did too, Laramore has used some funds too. They're really good to get the information to the um, the city uh, mayors and to the, the council, so that they can be aware these funds are available. And they have really done a good job in utilizing those dollars, so they can make those communities safer, Olivia.
Oh, great, that's good. I just didn't know if it came to us and we had to reach out to you.
Yeah, I know, they, they do, they do a good job in getting this out, and as a matter of fact, uh, usually there is a mayor from every county that they serve to take that back to other mayors uh, in their county. And so they do a really good job of that.
Sounds great.
Okay, anything else for the good of the order?
Madam Chair, the commissioner, on page one sixty-six.
Oh, the veterans' party.
Yeah, the veteran, I, uh, Tom Sadler reached out to me and asked what we wanted on our donor wall plaque.
Mm-hmm.
And I contacted Commissioner Knob and told her what I, what I did. And even see on page one sixty-seven, I put county of Grand Forks over three lines, it had to be centered. Just so you know, that's what I did too, because I, he contacted me last week, needed to know right away. And he reached out to me, I guess, in April, and I, for whatever reason, didn't notice the email because it came from, a survey from the Park District, and I was like, what is this? And so I didn't look at it, and so when he reached out to me, he was in desperately for me to make a decision, so this is what I did. Um, but I just wanted you to know.
That is fine, did you want a motion on that, so it's recorded?
If, if, if you think it's necessary, I guess.
Well, as long, I don't think it would hurt um, to have a motion and an approval. So does someone want to make the motion to approve the signage for Grand Forks County on the um, Veterans Memorial Park Donor Wall?
So move.
So move to one a second? Okay, so a roll call, vote all those, for, all those, yeah, in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried.
I just need one more comment on that, because part of that is when, when we sent out these notices to all the donors that had made contributions, part of it was, are you planning to attend the Parks Dedication Ceremony, which is September eleventh to twentieth anniversary of two thousand or nine eleven? And so basically, that question, you know, did we put on there, maybe, because we don't know, and, and, you know, we sent out a hundred and sixty letters and most of them came back, maybe. But, but the thing is, is that for donors um, who have, have made a donation, is that we're doing special seating for those individuals, and so we, you know, we're looking at maybe a thousand, two thousand people at this event. And the only ones that are going to get special seating are going to be families where they have somebody on engraved on the memorial wall, our donors, and uh, that will be a holiday, and so if the commission thinks that they, or anybody else in county government thinks that they would like to attend, and probably anybody that's in this room, um, um, I can at least reserve six to eight chairs or whether.
I think that's a good idea.
Whether, whether you, otherwise, you're free for all and you're, you're going to be standing in a front row seat, so. So anyhow, I can, can I submit that, just put eight?
Please do.
Yeah.
That would be appreciated.
I already know I have a conflict on that date, so.
Well, but at least
Yeah.
we're, we're covered, so, and there might be somebody else that, that wants to.
Mr. Ford.
I think. Or somebody might want to bring their wife or husband or whatever. So, I would, I'll just please.
Please take care of that, Diane, that would be appreciated. All right, anything else for the good of the order? If not, does someone want to make a motion to it during the meeting?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Assuming a roll call, vote all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.